Donavick.
I'm Donavick Lees and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and to the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah.
City of Congress. And welcome to the 1,925th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, August 9th, 2021. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Vice President Barr?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
President McIntyre?
Here, and we have all members of the Council with us this evening. At this time, we have the presentation of the minutes for the 1,924th regular meeting of the City Council that was held on July 12th, 2021.
Move to approve.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Toy. Does anyone have any corrections from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes are approved with no changes and they're approved unanimously by all members of the Council. At this time, I go to the Council if anyone has any announcements, tributes, or recognitions they'd like to make. Council? All right, seeing none. I have some birthdays that it's my pleasure to announce. We'd like to wish a very, very happy birthday to one of our district court judges, the Honorable Kathleen McCann, whose birthday is today, July 26th. And coming up soon is the birthday of our former Director of Legislative Affairs, Ms. Judy Preby, whose birthday will be August 2nd. And I would like to announce that we do have new data this evening on items 19 and 21, and I will refer to those new data items with specificity when we reach those items. And I do have a public hearing to announce. There will be a public hearing on August 2nd requesting to rezone property at 13950 Merriman Road and 31324, 31330 and 31374 Schoolcraft Road. At this time, I have the pleasure and the privilege of announcing our department heads, beginning on my left, our City Engineer, Mr. Todd Zalinsik. Next to him, Mr. Mark Taramina, our Director of Development and Economic Development and Planning. And next to Mark, we have Sarah Casperich, who's the manager of the City Council Office and the Council Business. On my right, we have our City Clerk, Ms. Susan Nash. Next to her, we have Ms. LaShawn Thomas, who's our Director of Governmental Affairs. And next to Ms. Thomas, we have Mr. Paul Bernier, our Lead City Attorney. And with that, we go to audience communication. And we generally ask the parliamentarian to read all of the specific rules, but I think that we could maybe suffice tonight by just reminding people that you have three minutes. Audience communication is an opportunity to address the Council on any item not on this evening's agenda. When you have one minute left, we will ask Kathy White, our parliamentarian, to keep track of the time, and she will let you know when you have a minute left. And when you come to the podium, we ask that you state your name and address for the record and also remind everyone that remarks that are profane or attacks on any person are not welcome and won't be accepted or tolerated. So with that, we'd like to go to audience communication.
Hello, my name is Ronald Regio. I live in Willowood subdivision, 37204 Breton Drive. And I'm familiar with Todd, the City Engineer. I've had him move my house numerous amount of times, talking about the water damage coming off the golf course that has never been fixed for the last 30 years. So I'm here today to tell you that I've done everything that Todd and me discussed. I put in a drainage ditch on both sides of the home. I put landscaping up there and built it up. And from homeowner lot 11 and 12, coming through the golf course off of Newburg in our subdivision, the retention pond there, comes through there, goes over the beehive drain in lot 11 and continues on. It looks like a lake. My deck looks like a pontoon because of all the water. Now, my wife's behind me, she'll show you some of the videos if you'd like to see it off her phone, she'll show you. But it was terrible two days ago. You know, we've been addressing this for 30 years and we have nothing done. We always put it on the people, the homeowners. I'm tired of hearing that. I did my diligence, my due diligence. I want the city to do their due diligence. Make sure that it's fixed. We got nice homes there. We don't need water damage in our homes. You want beautification? We give it to you in Willowood subdivision. Go through it, each and every home. And we're sick of hearing excuses with the city. It's our responsibility. It's not. It's coming off the golf course and we want it fixed. We don't want to hear, well down the road, "I want it fixed." That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regio. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair, is there any, sir, is there any chance that you could grab one of these cards and get your information if it'd be possible to maybe set up a time to do a site visit?
Sir, Todd has my information here.
Okay.
He knows where I live. We've had a lot of conversations together in my house.
All right.
You know, I'd like to either see Todd or Tom Walsh.
All right, no, if it's possible, yeah, I'd like to set something up.
And anybody that come over and assess everything.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Regio. Patty?
I don't think there's much more to be said as long as we can. So Patty Regio, 37204 Breton Drive, and I'm here for the same situation, flooding in our entire subdivision. The streets are, can't get through the streets. And they, after the rain stops, the streets were flooded for a good hour and a half. And one of the neighbors behind me has some photos. And when I say flooded, I don't, you'll have to see the photos. It's up to porches. I mean, so in our house particularly, the water rushes down both sides like an absolute river. I have video of it. And so, yeah, the drains just are not doing the job there. And this has been an ongoing problem for decades. So we are requesting that somebody from the Engineering Department assess it.
Madam Chair. Just one moment. And then I'll go to my colleagues. Patty, if you could, the card that was right there, I think, has Sarah's phone number on it. And the 4662250, that's the Council Office.
Okay.
And if you would like to forward the pictures to Sarah and then she can share them with all of us, and if you have the video posted somewhere, you want to share a link, I think we'd all be interested in seeing that.
Fantastic. So is it ci.cia.gov?
Yes, it is. And then I think the phone number of the Council Office is on there too.
Okay. Fantastic.
I think our email changed.
Email changed. Those cards are old.
They go through. It's a shorter email, livonia.gov, but it will go through to that longer.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Councilmember Toy and then Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Regio, when you have those problems, have you, at the time when it's happening, where do you call for the city? Have you tried one of us? Have you tried an emergency number? Have you tried the police department? I just wonder where folks go now because we have a new system in place.
Yes, to all of them. We do have some personal cell phone numbers of some of the staff.
Okay.
You know, but it's...
No, and I'm not trying to sidestep your issue.
And the kind of police, yeah.
I just, for my own information, because when you're having a flood or a fire, you want somebody boom there, if at all possible, or at least knowing what's going on. You know, I mean, you know, we've got a lot of staff here. We've got a lot of great people here. And we should be alerted to different issues that are happening to our residents with an unusual amount of rain. I know it's been crazy, but as was said earlier by your husband, you've been facing this problem for a whole long time.
We have.
So hopefully, you've come to the right place. And between seven great minds here, well, some of us are greater than others, I'm just joking around, but honestly, Patty, let's see what we can do to help.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I want to go to Councilmember Jolly, but also Patty. LaShawn Thomas, who's our Director of Governmental Affairs, is here and is our liaison to the Mayor's Office and will be, is our kind of direct line and will be communicating, making sure that the Mayor's Office is aware of the comments tonight.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you very much. Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. So I suspect that we're going to get some more comments that are similar to this. And I understand that this is quite an issue. It's an issue that's coming up more and more often. From my own experience, and not to minimize yours at all, when this most recent rainstorm happened, I had people paddle boarding down my street because the water was two feet deep in the middle of the road. In the 12 years that we've lived in our house, it happened once, maybe like 10 years ago, and now it's happened three or four times this season alone in the last couple months. I think we need to take a hard look at what is going on with our infrastructure in terms of these potential rainfall, how the city infrastructure is set up to respond to those. We need to identify hot pockets in the neighborhoods throughout the city and kind of address those strategically. For that reason, I will offer a resolution to put this into the Committee of the Whole to review city infrastructure in terms of our watershed and its impact on residences and businesses alike. That would give us an opportunity in a more closed setting, not closed, but more intimate setting, where we can have more of a dialogue together with you and anybody else who's interested. And I'd also expect to hear from our department heads and our administration in terms of what, number one, what is the city's responsibility, how we get to meeting that responsibility, and ultimately, how we solve this going forward. And I'd love a second for that if I could have it.
Madam President? All right, seconded by Councilmember Donavick. Is there any discussion on Councilmember Jolly's resolution to put this issue, to look at it in a broad way, in terms of our infrastructure and the watershed into Committee of the Whole?
Great idea.
All right, then we could go ahead. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on Councilmember Jolly's resolution to put this issue into Committee of the Whole?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. So we will be putting this into Committee of the Whole, which I'm sure, as you know, means that the Committee of the Whole is the entire Council. And when we have those committee meetings, we request different people from the administration. In this case, it would certainly be the City Engineer, it'll be DPW, it'll be the Mayor's Office to come and to look at this holistically in a deep dive kind of way. And you can keep in touch with the Council Office and Sarah can let you know when we get that meeting scheduled. And we will work to get that scheduled as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, if I could just add one more thing?
Please.
I would request that anybody in the city who's watching or anybody who is aware of these areas of intensive need or areas that have been affected by this, to contact City Hall immediately so that we can have that on our list and we can go over those during that meeting and we can bring them to the attention of the administration and, like I said, triage and try and meet the responsibilities that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Karen G. and I live at 19772 Sussex in the Willowood subdivision. My house is on the curve of the subdivision. So the houses that they live in, back up to the golf course, mine comes around the curb and it's at the lowest point of the subdivision. So when all the water drains from their backyards, it goes into and plants itself in front of my house. I've had a lake, this is not even a lake, this is, I've had water all the way up to my front porch in my garage. This was in 2014. I lost everything in my basement. And at that point, we contacted DPW. We had somebody come out from the department. They looked, they said, "Oh, yeah, I think I know what might be the problem." And I believe his name was Tom Wilson. He was the supervisor and he gave us, me and my husband at the time, a card and nothing was ever done. Nothing was ever looked into. So it's happened before, however, this past July, the past week, it was again, not as severe, but I once again had a lake in front of my house. And it's only in front in my house because I'm at the low end of the subdivision. It came all the way up to my garage. It started seeping into my garage. I am a widow and I had my 16-year-old son helping me broom water away from my garage. I had all the grass clippings that were never picked up, bags floating in front of my house from the neighbors because Friday is our grass clipping, never was picked up. So I have my son with me, running around, picking up floating grass bags. My car was in my driveway. Luckily, the water did not go over the tires, but this is, you can see, my son standing. We all now have mosquito bites all over our legs because we were trying to go out to the sewer, making sure none of the grass clippings, and it wasn't ever blocked. I'm always constantly going out because the sewer grate is in front of my curb to make sure it's clear, make sure there's no branches, and it's always clear. The water was up to my top, my, just at my hip fall. And here's my son.
If you could just stay in front of the microphone because that way then your comments get picked up and everyone listening on the streaming can hear.
Yeah, so it was up to...
Thirty seconds.
Up to my waist. So, I mean, I've lived here for 20 years. I've experienced this, like Ron said, multiple times. To me, this is unacceptable. I don't feel like I have, I should be living in fear. I feel like I can't even take a vacation because if it rains, I don't know what's going to happen. And these are the pictures of the water seeping into my garage. I really hope somebody, like I said, I've contacted police. I even called them on Saturday and he was not any helpful. I don't, we can't help you, ma'am, there's a lot of people. I said, "Well, can you at least give me a number of somebody on Monday that I can contact?" DPW? Nope, I don't have a phone number for you, sorry.
Well, I'm very, very sorry about that and you've heard that the issue will be going into Committee of the Whole. Also ask you if you'd like to send your pictures to Sarah so we can all see them and stay in touch with Sarah and she will let you know and we'll get the meeting scheduled as soon as we can.
Okay.
Very, very sorry.
Where's the email on the card?
Should be right up there.
Right there, okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Leegy and I live at 19760 Sussex. I live right next door to Karen and I know what she's talking about because I've lived in our house for 30 years and I've seen her house before she moved there with the water coming up to the other people's front door. Our backyard has been flooded four times and the last, the worst time was in, of course, 2014. And we did take pictures and there's someplace in the City Hall here, I don't know, filed away. And the last flood we had was, you know, like last week and that, and it was coming pretty close. When it comes to the side of our house, we live in a two-story, well, actually, three-story. We have a walkout basement. So I was just waiting for that water to start going down because when it goes down, that's when our backyard floods. So we do have this problem. We moved in, I think, in 89 and that was in November. And by December, we had a flood in our backyard in the wintertime. And I thought it was maybe, it was just the building debris, but it wasn't. It was, you know, the sewers and all that. So we have a huge problem. And we have stones on the side of our house. The water is so strong, it just pushes big boulders down into the middle of our backyard and we have a large backyard. So it's quite a concern for us and it's like Karen was saying, we're afraid to leave in the summer, to go on a vacation or leave for a while because you don't, never know when it's going to happen. And it's terrible.
Well, thank you for coming this evening. We're very sorry for everything that you've all been through and you also heard, and we'd encourage you to get in touch with the City Council Office and Sarah can let you know as soon as we get our Committee of the Whole meeting scheduled and we will...
Okay, and now where are those pictures that I sent in 2014?
I do not know where the pictures from 2014 are.
Okay.
That predates all of us and, you know, I'm sorry that I don't know where they are.
Okay, so I could probably just send more?
Yes, you certainly could.
Okay, thank you.
We, we'll make sure that everyone sees those. Okay, all right. Thank you. And we're sorry.
My name is Joseph Leegy. I'm Cindy's husband and I'm Karen G.'s neighbor. And that video that my wife was talking about, I did give it to you, but you say it's gone.
Well, in 2014, is that the video?
Yeah, 2014. It was at an ice cream social that I met you and we talked together.
I remember talking to you.
And, okay, I gave that same copy to the engineer in the Water Department and I don't know what he did with it. He probably put it in some folder somewhere, so when that... The street fills up with water and I'll try to describe the video. And I'm talking, the water gets this high and it's deeper than what Karen explained. It gets below, it just touches the bottom of the mailbox. And when that street fills up, it empties between her house and my house. And there's a lake in the back of my yard and I'm telling you, it's a foot and a half deep. Now, with that walkout basement, we're fighting to keep the water out because we, you know, you can't, you just can't. But we've, the 2014 flood, the whole basement was flooded, so. And we have no flood insurance. And what I'm thinking of is, could we possibly get a tax break so that we could put that monetary part of it, you know, into flood insurance?
We can't. And I do remember talking to you at an ice cream social, and I think you gave me pictures of your backyard.
Oh, yeah, it was a video.
And I have, as you were speaking, as your wife was speaking, I was wondering if that was the pictures I remember seeing of your deck. I think, do you have a deck?
Yes, right. I was standing on the deck and my wife was just about ready to cry, you know.
And the reason I said in 2014, that predates any of us being on, any of us who are here now being on the Council, and we certainly just don't get rid of things, but sometimes it's hard to go back, find something from seven years ago.
Yeah, in fact, after that flood, it ruined, my deck is a raised deck. And it ruined a whole deck. All of the stanchions were, or the posts, they either sunk or raised up because of the water. And it cost like $22,000 to replace the new deck, so.
Well, we, as you heard, Mr. Leegy, and we appreciate everyone who's taken the time to come here tomorrow and tonight and really feel terrible for what you've all been through. We will be addressing this in a holistic way in a Committee of the Whole meeting and, as I mentioned before, we request the people to attend and it will be, the Mayor's Office will be, DPW will be, the Engineering Department. And, you know, that will be an opportunity to discuss the holistic remedy for this.
Yeah, and as far as the, you know, I tried to get hold of 911, didn't work. I tried to get hold of the, I can't remember what, the...
DPW?
No, yeah, the DPW and then the police were finally notified. They very kindly took my name and I says, "Please turn my name into the Water Department" so they know. I called, so.
Well, and I think one of the things, you know, that we need to make sure during times of emergency, people do know who they can reach in the city and how to reach them and which issues we can help with in the immediate aftermath of an emergency. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And again, we're very sorry.
Hi, my name is Carla Truxell. I live at, ah, I just drew a blank, 29583 Jacqueline Drive. And I just want to say, my heart goes out to you for what little water I've had in my basement. I have nothing to complain about. But I guess kind of happy I get to end on a positive note. My husband and I are the founders of Espian Survivors. We are a nonprofit organization and our mission is to engage and equip communities to strengthen mental health and prevent suicide among youth and teens and young adults. And we have office space for the first time, so we are having a ribbon cutting through the Livonia Chamber on August 10th. The ribbon cutting is at 4:00 and then it'll be an open house to follow. And so we want to invite all of you in the community to come learn more about who we are and what we do and how you can get involved and make a difference and help with the mental health of our community.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. I'm sure that we all will receive, if we haven't already, information from the chamber. We have asked that the chamber start once again sharing all the ribbon cutties in the sitting with everyone on the Council so we're aware of, you know, businesses or nonprofit organizations like yourselves. And I know that all of us try to attend as our schedules permit, but thank you for the work you're doing.
Okay, and I thought of one more thing. We have resource cards, mental health resource cards.
Okay.
And we created a Wayne County one and there are some on the desk out there when you come in for you to have that information at your fingertips.
Wonderful. And if you'd like to leave a stack either on the podium or right there next to Mr. Zalinsik, we will share those with the offices in City Hall. Anybody have anything to comment?
Madam President? For me?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to just give a shout out. Thank you for making Livonia your home. We're, I have it penciled in and what you guys are doing is incredible, so keep up the good work and looking forward to, that's August 10th, correct?
Yes, yep, two weeks from tomorrow.
And thanks for coming and letting us know. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice President Barr?
Just regarding the flooding issues, if I were sitting in the audience, I'd be thinking, "Why aren't they asking the City Engineer any questions?" Maybe nobody's thinking that, but that's what I'd be thinking. And I just want you to know that because of the, this is clearly a long-term issue and somebody said you've been talking about it for 30 years. If this is a short-term issue, I think we'd probably be trying to wrestle through a solution tonight, but I think it's appropriate going to committee and we'll have opportunity to dig into that deeper there. So I just wanted to address that because if I was sitting in the audience, I'd wonder why that hadn't happened and I think the committee meeting is a proper place for that. Thanks.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you for the clarification, Vice President Barr. I guess I'd just like to add to that, when we talk about putting it in committee, it's not to make it go away and not to deal with it, but the advantage of a committee, and Vice President Barr alluded to this, and that's why I wanted to mention everybody that gets invited, it's an opportunity for us to invite specific departments and all the departments that have a stake or authority or responsibility in this to be together in the same room, hear directly from residents and be able to put solutions on the table and dig deep into things. So there's absolutely no, you know, putting this into a committee in order not to deal with it tonight, but that's exactly why we're not asking specific questions of the City Engineer because this goes, and that was Mr. Jolly's, I believe, rationale for putting it into committee. This goes far beyond just, you know, problems on one street, right, or occasional flooding. So thank you. Yes, Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. I just also wanted to say, great idea to Councilman Jolly. I think it's important that we put this item in committee so we can actually look into it deeper and have a discussion. All the residents, you're more than welcome to come out and talk about what you're going through, different department heads, all the council members, really being able to focus on one issue and hopefully being able to drive some sort of solutions as opposed to putting rocks at the end of your, at the end of your street or, you know, putting a little berm. Those aren't, those aren't long-term solutions. But hopefully, in this committee, we're able to have some really good discussion with the residents, with the department heads, with members of Council and hopefully come up with something that can help solve this so 30 years from now, we're not dealing with these same issues. I know my block, I, one end of my block on Garret Street was completely flooded and all the kids were out in the street playing and, I mean, it's fun to see the kids playing, but it's definitely not, not good and we... not, not good. And we want to fix that. So I'm hoping that this committee is able to drum up some ideas and have some sort of long-term solutions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And if there's no one else, then that brings us to the end of our first audience communication session.
Hey, I'm Maria Alloway. 373-16 Seabrook Drive is where I live.
I'm sorry, what was the street?
373-16 Seabrook Drive.
Thank you.
And I feel terrible about what's going on there. I'm not here for any flooding, thankfully. I'm good with that. I'm here for a permit for my son's graduation.
Okay, I think you're on the agenda.
Oh, okay, so not right now.
Right, so we'll call you when we get to that agenda item. All right, thank you. It can be a little bit confusing. So just bear with us, and you'll know when we get to your item. All right. With that, we go to the consent agenda. And tonight, items numbers one through 16 are on the consent agenda, and they're voted on as one item. It doesn't mean that they're any less important than any other items on the agenda, but rather, when we covered them in our July 12 study meeting, they were determined to be non-controversial in nature.
So?
Support?
Support from, approval moved by Councilmember Toy, support from Councilmember McCullough. And Madam Clerk, if you would please take the vote on the consent agenda, which tonight is items one through 16. Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. And as Vice President Barr just pointed out to me, I skipped over our item that we should have covered before the consent agenda. And that is reports from the mayor and other city officials. This evening, we have communication from the Department of Finance dated July 1st, 2021, regarding the forwarding of various financial statements of the city of Livonia as of May 31st, 2021. And it is respectfully suggested that the item listed above those financial reports be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And with that, we move forward with our agenda onto- Item 17, which is, which takes us to the unfinished business of the unfinished business meetings of the committee. Item 17 covers our finance and budget committee meeting that took place on June 30th, 2021. And this has covered, addressed council resolution 367-02. And this is the topic of the annual audit reports, City of Livonia Audit Reports, reports for the period dated December 1st, 2019, to November 30th, 2020. And the chair of that committee, Vice President Barr, is going to give us a report out.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so Wednesday, June 30th, we met to review the audit of the city. This is an annual, annual meeting that we have. And it's usually a good one, because we have a well-managed city, and it gets reported out by our auditor here. But members of the committee that were present were myself and Vice Chair Rob Donavick. Other city officials present were City Council President Kathleen McIntyre, Finance Director Mike Slater, Assistant City Attorney Leo Neville, and Chief Accountant Connie Kumpla. Then we had Representatives Plant Moran with us as well. We can be in the meeting at 7:01 PM. And in this meeting, it's a fairly detailed review of the city's finances. I don't typically go into too much detail on it with these report outs, but try to just catch some high points that I think are of relevant interest to our citizens. Plant Moran did present their annual report. The city, once again, was given an unmodified opinion, which is exactly the goal. It's the highest opinion you can get. This year presented extra challenges with working remotely during the audit, and converting to the new Gatsby 84 accounting standard. And both Plant Moran and City Finance Director Mike Slater expressed their appreciation for everyone's efforts working remotely and pulling this off. The thing that we love to report out is there were zero errors by the city in more than 8,000 financial journal entries. In my time on council, I think we had a few years where there was one or two. I think this is three years running of zero. Mike Slater hates it when I say that. But we got to keep the pressure on him to keep his track record going. But that's pretty incredible. Having just a few errors is amazing. Having zero is incredible. Some high-level information to note, both revenue and expenditures were higher in fiscal year 2020. Revenue exceeded expenditures by 1.3 million. The unassigned general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is about 24%, which far exceeds the minimum requirement of 16.7%. And that's, we, just as elected officials, and I know city directors endeavor to keep a solid cushion there, and we have that now. Though not fully funded, Livonia's legacy costs continue to be well managed and in the top tier relative to other Michigan communities. That's something we're constantly keeping our eye on. But the city's considered very healthy in that regard, as far as our continued vigilance in staying on track with the funding model for those funds. Plant Moran recommended that we continue to make discretionary contributions to those funds, which we will. The defined benefit pension system is 96% funded, which represents an $11 million liability. The VIBA is 59% funded, representing an $85 million liability. Obviously, we'd love that to be 100. But again, that is far beyond what most municipalities in Michigan are. The committee recommends to receive and file the 2020 audit report as reported, as submitted. This item will remain in committee, and we adjourn the meeting at 7:57 PM.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Do we, so everything's just, everything's received and placed in file, so we don't need any extra of that. Any questions by council, or anyone else in the audience? All right, seeing none, we will then move on, continuing with unfinished business and meetings of the committee. We'll continue on with the Public Safety, Health, and Environment Committee meeting of July 19th, 2021. This was council resolution 42-20, the subject matter of urban environment concerns. And I will yield the floor to Councilmember Toy, who serves as the chair of that committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on, let's see, August the 18th, and we had two items to discuss in that committee, July. Yeah, you're right. Sorry, I'm reading our deadlines.
Back to the future.
Oh, well. Yeah, okay. I'm trying to, you know, get through the summer here. Anyhow, we did meet. That's the important thing. And we, on that committee, Madam Chair, as you've appointed, is Vice Chair Councilman Brandon McCullough, and Rob Donavick as well. So had kind of a longer meeting than expected, but a very fruitful meeting. We had a lot of the sustainability members there as well. And we discussed money, grant money. And this was brought to our attention by some of the members of the Sustainability Committee, as well through Eagle and the Recycling Partnership Grants. Also in attendance were some of our city folks, like LaShawn and Josh. And they were very helpful in guiding us as we continue looking at these grants today, which would provide 20% of the grant to be used towards recycling, possibly carts, education, so that we can get rid of some of the contamination and such that are going on as we pursue more recycling efforts in our city. I happen to be on the council back, and not when Abraham Lincoln was shot either. But when we were discussing the initial contract with the city haulers, and at that time, we didn't feel comfortable charging a lot of money extra for the carts. The day may come eventually, as we study this issue more, to go to a 64-gallon bin, possibly. So that other recycled materials, as we educate our public and have funding for it, could be looked at. Also mentioned was an innovation grant, which they're offering, which Councilman McCullough, in Next Recycle, or Next Cycle Michigan, could be used towards creating pathways in our city made of recycled materials. He offered a resolution on both those accounts, which really will put this city in good stead environmentally as well, something that some of us have wished for a whole long time. So we would like to further explore the subject manner of both the education sessions, and the carts, and the Next Cycle Michigan as well, and have a resolution that would forward that information to the administration, so that they can begin to study it a little bit harder. And there are some deadlines on those grants for right now, on the 18th of August. But if we can't meet those, we are willing to look at the end of the year, possibly as well, Madam Chair and others. And we also looked at repurposing trees was brought up. And the tree committee will also be looking at tree ordinances and such. So that concludes that part of our committee. And so the resolution for the Community Resources and Communications Department, along with the Director of Governmental Affairs, to complete and submit both recycling grant applications to look at those. And so we need that resolution for them to kind of begin to look at that and any monies that may be available in the future. So I move that, Madam Chair.
Support?
Support of, oh, sorry, I'm not sure it is me.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember-
Just briefly, Councilman McCullough and Councilwoman Toy had some really great ideas in terms of, you know, having a discussion of what the future looks like, when it comes to terms of how can we be more sustainable in the future. A lot of folks from the different committees, and some residents were there. And there were some really great discussions that I had, and we had. And there's some dollars available at the state level. And if other communities are vying for those, then maybe we can try to get some of those dollars to the city of Livonia, and utilize those funds for some good causes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Vice President Barr, and then Councilmember McCullough.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Committee Chair Toy, for that report out. One question I have, and I guess I'll refer this to Councilwoman Toy as the chair, unless some, or whoever. But in, I just want to make sure, in submitting these applications, does this require any financial obligations for the city at this point?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, so we're not, okay.
Yes.
And then the second thing, I just want to comment, and this is kind of a technicality, but it's, our resolution says the council refers this to Director of Governmental Affairs and the Department of Community Resources. I don't think, first of all, it's totally appropriate to go to Department of Government Affairs, in my opinion. I mean, that's what the purpose of that department is. But typically, don't we just refer these to the administration? Other than law, I don't think we usually refer the, tell the administration which department should handle it, even though these may be the ones. So probably a technicality, but I would suggest that that just be referred to the administration, and let them handle as they best see fit.
Thank you, Councilman Barr. The reason we did that is because we did have them at the meeting, and they did offer to help. So we kind of, you know, included that in the resolution. That's all. As I said, Josh Shabo was there, who, I believe his title is Director of that. And he offered to help through the communication, and through possibly helping to write up the grants. So I think that's why we included it. Mayor's representative-
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, to be honest, I think it's no harm, no foul. I was just, I just don't want it, as council, to start getting in the habit of telling the administration which department should be working on things. That's all.
Sure. Okay.
So are you?
So- We have a resolution on the floor.
No, I-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, I was asking if you're asking for-
Whatever you want to do. It doesn't matter to me. He's aware of it. But go ahead. If you wanted just to go to the Director of Governmental Affairs, is that-
No, I was just suggesting we just refer it to the administration.
That's fine. That's great. Yeah, that's fine, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Donavick, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. One thing that we did also, I want to give a shout out to both our acting chief and our fire chief, that was the second part of it-
Yeah.
-that explained our current retention.
Wait, were you, did you?
Did you touch, I don't think you touched-
Well, we're on the resolution of this, and then I'm going to announce that one, but that's okay.
No, no, go with it. I want to make sure it got touched.
Yeah, we have a, we have a resolution. We have a motion on the floor right now.
He had fun in that meeting.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion on the resolution that we have on the floor? Anyone from the audience? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on referring this matter to the administration, on the resolution to refer this to the administration? Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye. And the resolution passes, so this matter will be referred to the administration. Madam Chair, did you have a-
Yeah, I have another one for us. We had two of them. And that item will remain in our committee as well, the discussion thereof, Madam Chair. Item two was, as Councilman McCullough spoke of, we had both chiefs in, our acting new chief as well, did a fantastic job. Not the best news on earth, but we're missing 31 officers right now, police officers, that is. In addition to, with that is a lack of dispatchers and other problems due to what he explained. Some of it was the media, along with the unemployment assistance. And it has, that has been provided near, with COVID. The budget gold is 189 employees for a full department. The defined benefit plan, which the council and the administration changed to and added to, supplied a larger pool of people for recruitment. And that began on August 1st. And we also went to 12-hour shifts for the police department, which they asked for. Hopefully, we'll have a number of applicants by September, the chief feels, or the acting chief does. He will take over in January. By the way, our current chief is retiring, and is aggressively trying to recruit and retain officers at that, now and in the future. It was noted that 1.7 have a background in the military, which was very interesting as well. And then our fire chief felt he didn't have the same types of problems that our police chief has. And I would like others on the committee to add to what I'm talking about here. But in the exit interviews, they felt that employees had gone to other departments because of lack of the defined benefit plan. And now that we have the defined benefit planned, it has created, once again, an applicant pool, so that we can match up other cities and other communities that have that type of offer to their employees, and also using lateral pay as an initiative for our applicants, which offers five different pay steps on that. He has a partnership as well with Schoolcraft College that provides dual enrollment program through Livonia and Clearanceville, students that are 18 years and older. And they can receive 20 college credits as well. So that was very interesting. Our acting chief also asked us for suggestions of what we felt, as a citizen and as elected officials, what we would feel would be really, you know, a good marketing tool for our police department to acquire other police officers. One of the, one of the topics I have brought up, just to share with the viewing public, and I know our council president's mom had taken the Livonia Police Citizens Academy. I know that Clerk Nash and myself went through that. It is excellent. And it was offered once a year. And I said to the chief, that is an eye-opener for different citizens, to go and really see what a police officer goes through in a given day, and what our department does. There's a lot of great people in City Hall that do wonderful jobs. But police work is probably like no other work that we've all experienced. And I know in our family, my mother used to worry about my father being a policeman, because he had a shift change. Every time she'd hear a siren at midnight, she'd freak out, because it was a very scary kind of time. So God bless all of them, and our fire, and our police, and all our city employees that do a wonderful job here. But these two were standouts that have been a little bit lack of staffing. And we kind of wanted to get some updates through our committee that were assigned, you know, for safety and health and the environment. And Madam Chair, that concludes that report as well. And this, we would like to leave as well into the committee for further tracking, et cetera, if that's all right. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to add?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks to Chair Person Laura Toy for calling this meeting, and discussions with her, and Councilman McCullough. Discussion of lack of staffing, the staffing issues in the police department is troubling. And I know, talking to both of them, they really wanted to have a discussion about it. Having the new chief come in that takes over officially in January was very eye-opening to have that discussion with him, and what his future plans are. And then having the fire chief, who's been here for a number of years, and have a discussion with him. It was encouraging to hear the, both chiefs talk about the increase in employees coming back to the community, such as the fire, further down to firefighters, I believe. Whereas in the police department, it's down 31 police officers that are on the ground. And then additionally, like Councilperson Toy said, there's more employees, there's staffers that- staffers that work within the department that are actually officers, dispatchers, et cetera, that they were losing as well. But I think we're heading in the right direction in terms of being competitive with other local municipalities for police and fire departments. The chief talked about our PSA program where we, as police departments, are able to take 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds, put them through Schoolcraft College and the Police Academy while working at police service aid position at the department, getting that experience, which is something other departments don't offer. But as Chief Grolski had spoken about, other departments are starting to mimic that program because it's great for getting young college students a pathway through school, getting their education while getting police experience, working the front desk, and then transitioning to road officers. So, I think our department is doing the right thing. I'm excited for Chief Grolski's future. He was very receptive to suggestions, and he's got a lot of great ideas that I think will increase morale at our department and also help with those staffing issues. The fact of the matter, like Councilperson Toy said, it's a difficult profession. Across the country, there's staffing issues. People don't want to be the police because of what they go through, not only on the road every single day with criminals, but what they're, how they're being attacked. And I know a lot of council members on this board absolutely support our police officers and our firefighters. And I think this discussion we had was great first step, continuing those steps to increase our numbers and get our department to full staffing numbers. So, thank you to both my colleagues on that committee, and thank you, Council President McIntyre.
Thank you, Councilmember Donavick. All right, if there's no further discussion, we will move on to unfinished business, which takes us to item 19. This is language petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2020-12-06-03 to consider the adoption of an updated and reformatted Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance and a Livonia Vision 21 zoning map. The proposed Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance provides new definitions, creates several new zoning districts, and deletes several existing districts, updates the list of permitted and waiver land uses for each zoning district, provides new requirements and regulations for lot sizes, building setbacks, and lot coverages, off-street parking, signs, alternative energy systems, and other regulations for structure and uses, including a new form-based development option for the city's commercial districts. And I would like to note an email communication that was received from Mr. Christopher LeBlanc, 31545 Grove Drive, Livonia, Michigan, 48154, received on July 21st, 2021. With respect to this item, be received and placed and filed for the information of the council. And the gist of Mr. LeBlanc's email was to assert that the revised zoning ordinance cannot be considered for adoption since it does not accommodate a structure in RUF, within the RUF zoning to raise or keep, file rabbits, horses, cows on a property with a resident. So, that was his, that was the content of the new data. All right. Council?
Madam President.
Councilmember Jolly?
Two things. I think we're looking for a first read here. Is that correct?
No, I think, I think what we're actually looking for is a referral to the Law Department to craft the language.
Okay. I will be happy to do that. I'll offer that motion.
Support. Support from Councilmember White. Discussion?
Madam President.
Vice President Barr?
I spent quite a bit of time studying Mr. LeBlanc's concerns. And while it's pretty complex, and he did an amazing job of sifting through a lot of details and presenting it to us. To my understanding, he raises a legitimate concern. In submitting this to, and I, my understanding also is that the Planning Department is an in-law, are working on some potential revisions to this, but those haven't come across yet. In submitting this tonight, will all that be a part of this? Or are we submitting what we previously reviewed tonight? I guess I'll ask that to law if it's okay.
As I understand it, the request that we need to, for us to draft the language of the ordinance, whatever we draft is only simply a draft for your consideration. So, that's something that can be changed at a first read or a second read, whatever you want. But the draft will come across pretty much as, as with Barr been planned or ever looked at, but ultimately, it's council's decision.
Well, I guess my question would be, and I, yeah, my question would be, if there's changes coming, does it make sense to do this tonight and then have to try to reason through that later? Or does it make sense to push this to meeting so that can be resolved?
I think Mr. Tumina probably could speak better than that. But to me, it makes sense to do it up because obviously, I saw that letter for the first time today myself. And we're going to, and we're going to take a look at the last thing in the world we want to do is draft an ordinance that doesn't fit the law. And if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. And we will make that change as we draft it.
If it's okay, Madam President.
Please.
I'd like to get Mr. Tumina's perspective on how to proceed.
So, the Law Department, as you indicated, the Planning, Law, and Inspection Department have been looking at the section that was, one of the sections that was referenced by Mr. LeBlanc. We intend to submit changes to that section. It probably is not going to address all of his concerns, but we did see the opportunity to improve upon that section. And that would be, we can submit that under a separate cover, highlight those changes to you prior to first read. But yes, the intention is to incorporate those changes into the draft of the ordinance that you would consider for first reading at your next regular meeting.
Okay, that answers my question then. If that's the case, then I'm comfortable with moving forward with this tonight. I just want Mr. LeBlanc to know and anybody else who might have interest in that issue that we're looking at that. And I, for one, look forward to seeing those changes because I think he raised some legitimate concerns. Thanks.
Madam Chair. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's been, it's been a while since we've looked at various topics as we begin to look at Livonia and what the future means for Livonia. You know, never before have we had to look at things like battery-operated cars. You know, as, as the world changes and the environment changes, we have to make some changes. And this is a, this is a welcome beginning that has been worked on since 2018. There has been numerous public hearings. There have been numerous outreaches. At the library was outstanding, our city planner, our city engineer, everyone was there to listen to folks as they viewed visual kinds of ideas as it would pertain to Livonia for now and in the future. Ed McNamara had a plan of, and it wasn't called reinventing government, but it was called, I can't remember the exact title. It was put on a shelf for dust, and unfortunately, we didn't get to that plan. There was also, in my time on the council, there was a program called Livonia Tomorrow. And that was looked at. We even went to Ohio and explored different niches and various components that they had that they were proud of in sharing with their communities and what, what brings people to a community as well and what, what gets them to stay here. Because the real competition, as we move forward, and in 30 years, when Rob said that earlier, I thought, gosh, in 30 years, I'll be 100 years old. So, I won't be here, but at least maybe I will be, who knows? But I guess what I'm saying is, you want to, you want to prepare for this future. And I think this begins, the Livonia 21 vision begins to do that and is doing that. And this is, we've come a long way. And I appreciate the motion that Councilman Jolly has made and supported as well with others, because this is going to help look at Livonia for what it can be and address those future needs that people that are younger and a little older than I am will, will want to know about for now and in the future. I think this is the furthest we've ever gotten in a report and in looking at a vision than I've seen in many, many years. And that was going to be my point, Madam Chair, as we explore this. And I think this council was a big part of it, as well as the administration. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to give kudos to a lot of people. I know that there was a zoning ordinance technical committee that had specials, several study meetings with the Planning Commission members. There was joint sessions between council and other members of the ZBA. A lot of work has gone into this, and I know this is obviously pushing it to gain some language on the ordinance. For everybody out there that, you know, is trying to grasp, this supports Livonia Vision 21, which is a master plan. This consolidates a lot of, a lot of our current zoning districts and laws that are currently in place and really pushes it into the future. I know a lot of the things that are coming up, I always talk about innovative development, you know, Livonia being a place that's nearly 100% built out for us to be competitive and be a place that people want to, you know, raise their, continue to raise their families, we have to be innovative going forward. So, I think this addresses it. I'm really excited to see law bring back the potential ordinance and really push this thing over the goal line. So, kudos to everybody involved, and this is a big step for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the resolution to forward this to law for development of language? And as discussed, that language would reflect the letter and the new data that we received from, or the concerns expressed by Mr. LeBlanc in his letter.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the resolution carries, and so we will be referring that to law for the creation of language. Item number 20, now we moved to new business. This is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance from Maria Aluia, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce it, to host a party with music at her home located at 37316 Seabrook Drive on Saturday, July 31st, 2021, from 3:00 to 11:00 p.m. Council?
Madam President, I'll offer an approving resolution.
Support.
Support from Vice President Barr. Before we go to the petitioner, any comments or questions, Council?
What school is your son graduating from?
Stevenson.
Perfect.
Go Chargers. Yeah. Go Bulldogs. He's a Bar City soccer player as well, so.
Madam President, can I ask a question? Did you guys lose to Churchill this year?
Uh, no, I don't think we did.
Okay.
Go Bulldogs.
All right. Council, do you have any questions about the petitioner's request to host the graduation?
Madam President.
Vice President Barr?
I know you're going to go to the petitioner, but I'll just ask this, not just if you can answer it. One of, my main concern will just be whether you've talked to your neighbors about this and that they're aware of it and okay with it. So, when you get a chance to speak, please address that.
Yes, I do. Talk to my neighbors, they're actually coming, and they actually offer their driveways as well.
Very nice. All right, Council, we've, any other questions? All right, then if no one else from the audience, we could go ahead and take the vote.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, Stevenson class of 81. You, your, your request is approved. Enjoy your party and best of luck to your son.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, now we go to item number 21. This is a waiver petition that comes to us from the Planning Commission for petition This was submitted by Livonia AM Rotary Club to conduct a carnival in the parking lot of Sears consisting of amusement rides, games, and food concessions from September 16th, 2021, through September 20th, 2021, inclusive of, on property at 29500 Seven Mile Road, located on the northwest corner of Seven Mile and Middle Belt Roads in the southeast quarter of Section 2.
So moved.
Support. I wanted to indicate that I had new data.
Okay.
All right, but we're already there. So, I would like to refer to the new data that I had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that we had. We have new data. It's respectfully suggested that an email communication received from Joanna Hardisty Wade Shows dated July 22nd, 2021, regarding transfer of the application for waiver use to Livonia AM Rotary Club with respect for this item be received and placed and filed for the information of the council. Also respectfully suggested an email communication received from Pat Zuchol, Livonia AM Rotary Club, dated July 22nd, 2021, regarding transfer of the application for waiver use to Livonia AM Rotary Club with respect to this item also be placed and filed for the information of council. And finally, respectfully suggested an email communication received from Pat Zuchol, Livonia AM Rotary Club, dated July 23rd, 2021, regarding the change in dates of the carnival with respect to this item be received and placed and filed for the information of the council. All right, so we have a resolution on the floor. Council?
Madam President.
Councilmember Donavick?
I supported that. I was going to make a comment, if that's okay with you?
Please.
I just wanted to say hats off to the AM Rotary Club. Oftentimes, residents don't know that these organizations, whether it be the Rotary Club, the JCs, the Lions, the list goes on of community organizations that work really hard behind the scenes to put these events together. We, this carnival's been going on for years at the hard work of the Rotary Club. And there are so many other community events that take place that are hosted by these different community organizations. It's exciting, especially with COVID, having this, this event and getting the public to come out. And so many memories are made at these events. So, just hats off to the different community organizations in our city. Thank you for our work, and I'm looking forward to attending and having some, what is it called? Popcorn, no, not popcorn.
Fun.
There you go, yeah, fun. Thanks. Thank you, Madam President.
All right.
Elephant ear, elephant ear, that's what it was.
Anyone else?
Sort of like.
Lollipops.
Would anyone from the audience like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the vote on the, on whether we will allow this waiver petition from the Livonia AM Rotary Club to have their carnival in September?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the waiver petition is approved. And we will look forward to the Livonia AM Rotary's carnival from September 16th through September 20th. I think that includes some, you know what I'm going to ask Joanna or Pat, if one of you or both of you would like to come up to the podium, just briefly introduce yourselves. And I think that includes some setup and takedown dates. So, if you could give us the dates that our residents and visitors can look forward to attending the carnival.
Right. Joanna Hardisty with Wade Shows and Livonia AM Rotary as well. The dates that are listed includes the 20th for our cleanup and, and tear down and cleanup. So, it'll be operating from Thursday through Sunday.
Wonderful. So, Thursday is the, help me with my date.
16th.
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 All right.
16 through the 19th, yes.
Okay, very good.
4 p.m.
All right, very good. So, mark your calendars, Livonia and surrounding communities.
Thank you so much.